Mike, can I get to do one of those travel forms?
No, because only one person can get reimbursed on the plane.
Okay.
Yes, yes, no.
I figured that made the most sense.
Oh, yeah.
Unless you'd like us to reimburse you in horse cream.
Oh, we are straight.
Thanks for listening.
All right.
No, you keep me.
Fine, because everybody here needs to be here from your perspective.
Uh, yes, and.
Devin, can you have another one for you?
Mayor Chavez?
These ends, this is your leadership class. Jane Collins. Hey, my mind went to Janine. I want to recognize some special guests and audience.
Hey, Mike, can you hear me?
Commissioner Sullivan, we can.
Okay.
Can you hear us okay?
Did you go then? Huh?
Yes, sir, we'll be starting here momentarily.
Okay. Yeah, Dale, I don't know what happened to Dale. I don't know.
Well, we, not a problem. We've got you online soon.
All right, Sully, good to hear from you.
Good to hear from you, Jerry.
Call this meeting to order. And right up front, I'd like to recognize Jim Dumont, who's with Senator Heinrich's office. Glad that you're here. And then Eddie Rollinson, who is the dean of business and IT at San Juan College. And you're in Leadership San Juan. You're in Leadership San Juan?
Yes, I am.
Okay, glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What best class ever are they up to now?
Twenty-ten.
Twenty-eight. Two thousand eight.
All right.
So we'll go ahead and stand, and I'll have Commissioner Beck send these in there.
Our Father in heaven, as we come before this day for our county commission meeting, we ask that thou will be here with us, that you will guide us as we make decisions for the county and go about the county's business. Father, we'd ask that you would bless our first responders, our sheriff's department, our firefighters, ambulance workers, especially during this time. Please bless those that are currently responding to the accident on five sixteen, that they will be protected and that no further harm will come from that and be with those involved with the accident, Father. Father, we ask thy guiding hand in our lives, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Commissioner Tom Chaney, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll go ahead and get started after the regular meeting. And so I need an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. And then Mr. Stark, do we have any changes to the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. Then at this time, I need a motion to, for the consent agenda.
No favor of the consent.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then we'll go on to new business, and this will be a presentation by Mayor Martin Chavez. And so at this time, we'll wait, and you'll just let us know when he gets on. Okay, and we'll go ahead and we'll move up to Arvin Trujillo. Is he here or is he gonna be virtual?
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Trujillo was gonna be here in person. He has provided us a copy of his presentation, but let me reach out to him. Yeah, and see if he's delayed in traffic.
Okay. Mr. Yost, if you'd like, you can go ahead and come up and do your presentation.
Man, we should have just had first tee right at the first.
So I just wanted to do a little snippet on Mr. Yost. Is, he was recognized by the Professional Golf Association of America with the 2021 PGA Player Development Award. And this is the highest annual award honor given to PGA of Americans, professional award for leadership, strong moral character, and substantial record of service to the sport. So thank you, Mr. Yost.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, first off, just responding to the award, extremely humbled. But what I'm telling everybody, which is the absolute truth, is I'm just the face of the program, and this is basically a program award. Just recognizing all the work that this community has really done and gotten behind the first tee through thick and thin, and really, the recognition goes to everything that this community's been able to do to get behind this. So first off, I want to thank all the commissioners, county government, for making this program really possible and acting as our fiscal agent. So, like I said, I'm the face of the program. I get the awards great. I'd love to be nominated and recognized, but it speaks to the true testament of everybody who's behind this organization. So, thank you. I'm just going to give my yearly report. Please, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. I'll make this as quick and painless as possible. Twenty twenty-one was a banner year for us. We did a lot of expanding. We did a lot of program sustaining. And we're really focused on just continuing the footprint of what we've already created. But now that footprint has expanded into the western slope of southwestern Colorado as we brought Durango on board now. So now we've got the name change. It sort of makes sense. We're now regional. We have the first tee at the Four Corners, which really speaks to the impact that the organization is making, community-wide. Just to speak sort of of some of the highlights of twenty twenty-one, we continue to have success with our technological program, our tracking system called OP-36. It's really a game changer. I mean, we've been really good at teaching life skills and character values through the game of golf, but now we're able to teach golf better, which is really a significant improvement because now we can keep kids in the program. Because golf is hard, and when it's hard, they tend to not want to do it anymore. But this sort of keeps them in the game. We've done a really good job. Our executive director, Tina Pacheco-Wide, has done a really good job at securing some new funding sources from out of the community through some T and M Foundation grants and the Navajo United Way. And we also have a matching grant program from Charles Schwab on a national basis. So that's really helping secure funding and allowing us to further our impact and make a difference. Some of our programs that we really introduced in twenty twenty-one, we went to New Beginnings, which is domestic violence shelter, and we got those kids and brought them to our program instead of them not having any way to get there. So our goal now is, you know, the kids that can come are coming, but now we're trying to reach the high-at-risk kids that can't make it to our program. So we're really making a focused effort on reaching the kids that would have absolutely zero opportunity to get to our program. One more highlight, too, not to, you know, I was asked to coach the National Special Olympics team from the state of New Mexico. So I'll be going to Orlando in the summer to coach the golf program for the United States Games, which is a pretty big honor for our program as well. Twenty twenty-two, we've got a couple of things that are really on the items, on the docket, above and beyond maintaining the quality of our programs. Number one is we're going to set up a caddy program for our participants at San Juan Country Club. We're trying to get the kids more life skills, more opportunities. And I can speak from experience, and I know your county manager can speak from experience. We both were caddies growing up, and, you know, just the experiences that came with that just sort of molded who we have become. So I think it's a really good opportunity for our kids to experience that in the community.
Who was the better caddy, though? That's the question.
I thought he had a better golf course, Commissioner Beck, that he was probably a better caddy. And then the second big thing on our docket is expansion into the Navajo Nation. We now have a direct line to Nota Bagay, and his foundation is now expressed great interest in partnering with our First Tee Four Corners to expand into the outlying communities on the reservation that, like I said, we wouldn't otherwise be able to get to. And finally, we are bringing a golf program for vets called PGA Hope. We just found out that we got accepted through the PGA of America. Hope stands for Helping Our Patriots Everywhere. And it's gonna be, we're gonna have a six-week program in San Juan County and a six-week program in Durango, and that's basically to try to help vets cope with life after service, give them an opportunity to build relationships with one another, get them to the golf course, give them a reason to get outside and be active and hopefully cope with some of their underlying issues that we wouldn't otherwise be able to identify. So, big plans on the docket for twenty twenty-two, but none of this would happen if it wasn't for you guys. So, thank you, seriously.
All right. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Yost?
No, I can, I just pulled up the OP-36, or the thirty-six, what is it, OP-36?
Correct.
And you get to track your golfer and see what they're doing and how they're doing it. So it's a hu, it's a, it's a great.
Where did you find it?
Great tool. It's, well, Brady did first tee last year, so. And both of my kid, my younger daughter is just stoked to be able to get to do first tee this year, her first year. So it's a, it's a great program. I can't say enough good things about it. And you get to see all the hard work that everybody puts into it. It wouldn't be as successful if you guys weren't doing the hard work, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I took a few lessons from you where we got to do a swing and throw the golf club. I think that should be a form of stress relief.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I heard Mike throws his all the time.
I do, yeah. Had a pure joy.
So. Coming from a golf family, I appreciate it. My parents are big first tee folks, and being an old coach, I understand, gotta get them young, get them hooked, and it takes care of itself.
There's a lot of etiquette that goes with that, too.
I need to tell how you are at virtual golf.
Virtual golf.
Because I just started that last week, and I'm just telling you, it's, it's worse.
Like on the, with the.
Big goggles?
No, I'm not, haven't, haven't gone down that rabbit hole yet, but it's coming, I know.
Well, if you do, make sure you put the band on so you don't run a brand new TV.
Oh.
Haven't done that yet, but.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yost.
Thank you for everything.
All right. Devin, do we have Mayor Chavez? Okay, is he gonna? Okay. Oh, okay. Hi, Mayor Chavez.
Is it snowing yet?
Snowing yet?
Yes, a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, glad to, glad to have you. I was gonna do a brief introduction for you. Glad to have you here.
Sure, sure.
We have with us Mayor Marty Chavez. He was the ma, the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth mayor of Albuquerque. He served from December first, two thousand one, to December first, two thousand nine. And most important is your lobo.
Well, I also went to state, so I'm an Aggie, too, when it comes to.
I have, I thought I'd point that out. That wasn't on my script. So, Mayor Chavez, as I said, served Albuquerque, and he will be the state's infrastructure advisor and will work with the community to determine priorities for the funding. His new role began this month. So we're pleased to have you here with us, Mayor Chavez. You can go ahead.
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you so much for having me with you this afternoon, this evening now, I guess. I want to just lay out for you exactly what we're looking at and what we know, also what we don't know, because some of that as well. I started November one. I am in charge of infrastructure advice to the governor. She's the decider-in-chief. I'm just in, I just advise. And then we have Mike Hammond, who comes out of the middle Rio Grande Concerned District. He's the water advisor. He's extraordinary, really talented fellow, except for the fact that he's out of Taos. He's a good guy. And then we have Mike, Matt Schmidt, who's a broadband advisor. There are three buckets, four fingers, there are three buckets of money. The first is ARPA, the American Recovery and Plan Act. And there was a one point one billion dollars that came to New Mexico. ARPA money, as we call it, is great money because it has very few restrictions on. The Supreme Court ruled in November that the legislature had to appropriate the ARPA monies. They met in a special session, the governor's call in December, and appropriated about six hundred million dollars of the one point one billion dollars of ARPA monies. They're, as we speak, appropriating the balance, about a half a billion dollars. And I want to emphasize that because it's really important money. It's also very accessible money, and they're deciding, as we speak, how it will be spent. So I encourage everyone, when they're not in this meeting, to be on the phone, to your delegation, state delegation, and pressing them to fund your capital needs. We don't decide your capital needs, you decide them. And we want to be here and listen to you to see how we can best facilitate your success. There's a bias in all of these federal programs, and this is from the governor as well, to get money out the door quickly, to do it in a way that is transformational where possible, and also to do it in a way that's transparent, so that everyone knows exactly what's going on. Projects that are front-loaded, that are either in the pipeline, either ready for funding, shovel-ready, as we say, or near that, will be given priority. If it was just a great idea that we had over the golf course, and I played that course many times, one Saturday, and say, what a great idea, that's probably not gonna make it into the funding stream for these federal monies. It needs to be somewhat down the road. Very happy that the governor, working with the legislature-funded Pinon Hills expansion during the special session, that's a forty million dollar project. They put thirty-five million toward it, and I believe the other five million will go in this session as well. I know that's a long-awaited project in San Juan County in particular. Mayor Farmington's very happy about that. So that's an important pocket of money. It will be spent, will be gone in the next, in the next two, two and a half weeks when the legislature finishes. And prior to being mayor, I spent five years in the state senate, and so I have a good understanding of that process. It's that making of sausage that is so attracted to the makers, but not so much to the, everybody else. Or maybe we should say it's attracted to the consumers and not to makers. The second pot of money that's available now is the general fund money. As you know, committing this part of the state, oil and gas has been really good, severance taxes, a lot of money. And that money, and I believe there's upwards of a billion dollars of new money, which is very flexible money because it's whatever the legislature and the governor says has to go. And so I would be, again, not in this meeting, with the delegation, doing whatever you can to leverage this money and get that money spent. I believe in spending the money. I've always said, if you're gonna take the money, do taxpayers a favor of spending it. Otherwise, don't take it. And so our approach to this has been, there are two sins. One, to leave money on the table. So we want to scrape all of the money out of Washington. And two, reversion. We take it, we do not want to revert it, we want to get it spent. And the governor's charge to me is very simple, get the money spent as quickly as possible and in a transformational way as possible. The third bucket of money, and this is where we get to spend a lot of time with each other over the next two years, is what's now called the bipartisan infrastructure law. It was originally the infrastructure investment for jobs, IJA, now it's the bill, bipartisan infrastructure law. New Mexico received about three point seven billion dollars. And that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. It's just a lot of money. And, but this money, unlike ARPA and unlike our general fund monies, which are traditionally grabbing capital out late, is highly formulaic. So what the federal government did in passing that monumental legislation, and this infrastructure spending is one that's eluded every president, regardless of party, for the last twenty years. This is a lot of money, and it's a once in a, I called it a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and somebody corrected me and said it's a once-in-a-state opportunity. So this is an important one for the entire state of New Mexico. It's not gonna come around again in this volume during our lifetime. So it's highly formulaic. So let's, for example, highways, we have existing programs within the New Mexico Department of Transportation. Basically, they just sweetened that. They just put the money in the existing pipelines. Same thing, for example, FAA, you have an airport, it comes in in ways that are already established, the patterns for which, and the requirements to which are generally known. What we're searching out in our office is to look for whatever discretion we can find. Because obviously, we want to be able to move money here and there, determine, as, as the state, as New Mexico determines its needs best, and we're better able to determine our needs than Washington, as Washington recognizes. So, a lot of water money coming in, a lot of road money coming down, not so much housing. That was in the Build Back Better legislation, which seems to be stalled. But otherwise, broadband is gonna receive about a billion dollars in funding in New Mexico. That's a lot of money. I don't know, because I'm a political politician, if that's adequate. It's a lot of money. And we know that if you look around the state, you have all these pieces of a puzzle, the broadband puzzle, but they don't all fit. The schools have broadband, big agencies have broadband, municipalities have broadband, but there's no comprehensive plan. And so now there's going to be a comprehensive plan, an office of broadband technology. It will be run by Matt Schmidt, who is the only attested on this team, but he's a good guy, very smart. He's working out of Illinois, he'll be back here in New Mexico and move in fully in the next few weeks. Matt spent, what are two terms in the Wisconsin State Legislature, so he has a little bit of experience in sausage making, and I think that'll help him because it's important to know who everyone is, you know, who the commissioners, who the senators, who represent the mayors around the state. And I emphasize that now, because we're gonna make mistakes as we go through. This has never been this, this volume. We're taking huge amounts of money, pushing it through very small pipelines and capacities that you can talk about briefly. But it's just not been done before. And so I assure you and ask for your patience as we work through this process. We want to speak with clarity as to what it is you need. And we've already had one symposium with all the mayors in the state, the governor. We had a similar meeting with all the county chairs and county managers with all of the infrastructure people and the cabinet secretaries that are gonna be responsible with this mic. So we're just gonna have to speak with clarity to each other. So we want you, we want to be clear, but we also ask you to be clear and refined, specifically what is your asking. And ultimately, the governor wants to hear from you. I want to hear from you, as to how we can do things. A little bit of money that's gonna come out, it's gonna link, let me back up one second. We're in the process of developing a dashboard, so that you'll be able to track every dollar of this federal money. Dashboards are not uncommon, but we're trying to do one at a level, and those just kids have not been done before. Because for each federal ticket, each dollar coming from a different federal program, we want you to be able to point and click and say, well, this is how much money is coming out of FAA. It's spread over five years because these different federal funding streams have different aspects to them. Some are right, one-time money, some are five-year money, some are three-year money. We don't even have the federal guidance for each one of these revenue streams. But we'll be able to click on that stream, see exactly what it is and what the requirements are around it, how you access it. And then once it starts to hit the street, it turns into contracts, whether it's a road contractor building that road, laying the pavement or asphalt. We want to be able to check on it and see where is it, is it on time, is it late? And this will be accessible to the public. Importantly, it's for policymakers, so we can make decisions, so that you can make decisions. But also, the public can see it, very much transparency, very transparent, and the White House is looking at this one in particular and wants us to make sure we get it done and right, as do we. We will be rolling out some early money on EV chargers, electric vehicle chargers. The goal, there's thirty-eight million dollars, every New Mexican living, making fifty miles of a charger. Right now, it's pretty easy to travel east to west across the state in an electric vehicle. Not so good if you come from Colorado, one of those cruises, because you gotta stop and charge a powerful long period of time. And so we're gonna work on the spine, the interstates, and then build that into the communities. And I know you already have some chargers in San Juan County. And ultimately, most people will be charging at home, but still, you can't be, can't be in this century as a state and not have, be accessible to electric vehicles, which will be, I'll be driving an E-150 as soon as they make them. So with that, I mean, it's just a lot of money, and we're gonna run into capacity issues. I should mention Hydras, because I know that's important for San Juan County. That's a big thing, but it's, that legislation itself is primarily internally funded through tax incentives and the like. And it's already, it's, it's on its way through committees. It got held up in the first committee. We'll see what happens, but I think that's an important thing for New Mexico. And at the end of all of it, if for some reason Hydras turns out not to be a partial panacea, because nobody thinks it's a panacea for everything, well, at the very least, we will, we will receive and spend within the state billions of federal dollars, which will help us with our gray matter, will have all these smart science engineering types looking at solutions and sustainability issues. It's just a good thing to have from New Mexico. So, with that, I don't know if you plan on any questions, and I might have to answer them. I do want to make sure that you have my contact information. My office in Albuquerque and Santa Fe, but I'm around the state quite a bit. I'm a triple backer, but I also just got a week in bed with COVID, and so I'm being careful, but I'm also in good shape. I got a lot of antibodies, so I'm getting back out on the road again, just to meet and talk to people and hear what the needs are. This is just a tremendous opportunity for the state. It's the only reason I was writing into very happy, graceful retirement, a lot of golf. And the governor tapped me against it. It's an opportunity to do some big things for New Mexico, and that's what, ideally, that's what we all do, right? We get some big things done, so when we're done, we can, I can say, look what you guys have done, look how we advanced the ball for future generations.
Thank you very much. That's really good information. We heard that at New Mexico County, it's a couple of us, but we wanted our colleagues to be able to hear this, too, because I think it's a really important message. There's a lot happening in our state. So are there any comments or questions for Mayor Chavez? Mr. Stark?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and Mayor Chavez. This is Mike Stark, caddy manager, and good to see you again. I was on the call a week and a half ago with the chair. Question for you related, because capacity is truly a concern for us internally, to be able to manage the funding that will be coming our way, and then also concerned about contractor capacity to, to, to manage these dollars, because there's a limited capacity there as well. And have you given any thought to maybe a staggered approach to some of the funding so that we don't overwhelm local government entities statewide, the state of New Mexico, as well as contractors here we're gonna have to lean on, as well as, you know, the professional services, architectural, engineering, et cetera? Because this, as you mentioned, this is a lot of money, and it's all hitting at once. And of course, the desire is to want to get it to the economy as quickly as possible, but that has some repercussions.
Yeah, well, actually, what happens when it gets in the economy, all of a sudden there's jobs and crime goes down. Well, I'm just kidding a little bit on that, that serious, serious business. We have, and I think I related that on that call, the conversation, Ms. Landry, who's a friend, former mayor of Orleans, who's the federal czar, White House czar for federal spending, and I said, we've got real capacity issues, Mayor, I mean, and this is gonna, you're going into all around the country, not enough electricians, not enough plumbers, and it doesn't matter if they went to the trade school, until you worked under some crusty old, you know, electrician, you don't really know what you're wiring in my house, for example. And it's just gonna be a problem. And he said, Marty, that's your problem. My job is to get the money out. My job is to get the money out of there, get money to you. I can't send you electricians, plumbers, you know, skilled tradespeople. And he's exactly right. And so we're looking at, we're looking at what I would call midterm workforce development strategies. And this is something that we all have dealt with over the years, because workforce development has been a challenge more than this last year. And we're almost at full employment right now. And you see the help wanted clients everywhere. But working with the, the two-year schools, with the trade schools, to really ramp up their curriculum to get people out the door. In, in my hometown of Albuquerque right now, we developed this program in, and it's a huge expansion, much larger than the original investment in New Mexico. And that is, they designed the criteria for C and M. And if you graduate in that, with that curriculum, you get a job automatically. And so it's, it's employer-based specific training or, or specific, or specific curriculum. That's one of the strategies. On that, we're just going to have to stumble through it. I'm working on some, some initiatives in, in the Taos area that involve the ski area and some electrification and solar challenges. And we're trying to figure out how to do it with the co-op so that when they finish one contract, they're ready to start the next contract immediately so the workers don't head up to Colorado or wherever, because you want to keep those workers here. We're, we're going to come up short. That's just my prediction. Staggering the money only works partially. The monies have to be obligated by 2024 and spent by 2026. So you stagger at your own peril. And that's, that's again, why the bias in favor of projects that are well into a pipeline than they're self-ready. There will be some ability to sum up that with the bipartisan infrastructure law with the bill, but not as, not, not that much, because again, that has timelines as well. We're just going to have to just get through that. And if it means stealing workers from Jimmer Polis in Colorado, or the governor of Arizona, I'm all for it. That's me speaking about the government, by the way. She may, she may have a different, different take on that, but it's going to be competitive. And so it's, I do want to mention one other thing, and that's grants. And we talked about that in the call. On top of the $3.7 billion, there's a lot of money coming in grants. And this is another reason why staggering is problematic. I said we don't do it, but it's just problematic. And, and that is, all this money in grants, historically in New Mexico, we've left a lot of money on the table because smaller communities don't have the capacity either to apply for the grants or to manage the grant. And so we're beefing up our capacity to write grants. The municipal league is beefing up their capacity. We know universities and hospitals already have that capacity somewhat, but wherever we can, we want to be able to get grant writers on. And as you know, Mike, that it's not just anyone can write any grant. You have to have some expertise in the area to be successful on it. Once you get the grant, it has to be managed. And so in that regard, we're working very closely with the COGS around the state because they do have capacity to assist smaller communities in, in the grant writing and in the management of these contracts. There's a heavy emphasis out of this office at the governor's direction on smaller communities of rural New Mexico. That's why the broadband is so important, is to connect rural New Mexico. Electrification is important in, you know, in, in the roads, of course. And, and we know that we almost lost a dam down in the county last year, the Gargantua. And so you're going to see some money coming out of ARPA. And that's just even before we get to the, the bill money. So a lot of brings and dam money. To get that money in, at least, you know, do our number one priority right as government, public statement.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And thanks, thanks again for your presentation.
Hey, are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, Mayor?
Identify yourself.
Oh, Mayor, this is Commissioner Steve Lanier.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions for you. One of them, you'd mentioned highways. So up in this area, we have some state highways that are in really, really bad shape. So I don't want to get into a situation where we're, we're making a wish list. So what would be your recommendation of, of how many highways or a dollar amount that we could be, you know, looking at, you know, to get aid from you?
Well, the first thing I would do was I'd be with your legislators right now for the next two weeks, because they are assigning money to various roads. And some of it, there is full funding, some of it is only partial funding. We've been down that road before. And so I would do that. And then after that, it's a question of working with NMDOT, which in my experience on this job, has the most people infrastructure and systematic or system infrastructure of any of the agencies. They're pretty well set up to get this money out. And they have priority systems. Now, priorities can change. And so, and if you haven't worked with Mike Sandoval, which I think some of you have, he's great, he's just really great. He, he, he wants to hear from you as well. What are your priorities? Again, the governor does. And, and, and this isn't just, this isn't politics. This is an election year. The governor wants to hear from us. Your legislators want to hear from you. It's a good time to talk to elected officials, as we all know, is an election year. So that's where I would go. And, and I wouldn't be shy about, about, you know, saying to the adjoining county, sorry, I'm going to get first in line. That's just the nature of the beast.
Right. Well, and my second question would be, is, is there any place in there for water storage? I didn't, you didn't mention anything about water.
I, I did, and I'd be happy for the next meeting to make sure that Mike Hammond is with you. He's the water expert. And there, there's not as much money as broadband, but there's a lot of money for water, certainly transmission, storage, looking for new, new water as well, whether it's D cell or whatever. There's not as much money as we'd like to have. For example, D cell, for example, which is an important future source of water for New Mexico. And I'm proud that still in New Mexico, the largest infrastructure project in history is still my San Juan Chama project while I was mayor. So the governor's asked us to look, you know, how can we expand the source of water? But then, as you know, water contamination and storage, ways to actually to manage the resources so they don't get frittered away or wasted. So yeah, there is money. And if you have it, Mike can give you specifics.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comments? Um, we don't have, we definitely have a public comment right now. Okay, you can go ahead and step up to the microphone and then identify yourself. Go ahead and take your mask down, just so you identify yourself.
Geneva Griego, I'm a community member. And I just wanted to know what bucket would funding come out of for quality childcare in the areas that struggle with having quality childcare available outside the traditional hours? And also, where is going to the funding for our education in New Mexico?
Sure, I understand that. And, and, and most respectfully, that bucket was Build Back Better, which is installed in the Congress. That had what I call the social infrastructure monies in it, very important, and it's just not happening right now. And I'm not focusing on it because maybe they'll put some parts of it out. And I'm, all of our prayers are bettering upon, he has stroke, and he's doing well. He's recovering in the hospital here in Albuquerque. But, you know, there may be some parts of that that will emerge. Beyond that, it's the money that lets you, it's what we're bringing right now. And I think as we all know, we all know how much money you put, it's not enough to meet the need.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. And I wanted to recognize Ms. Griego, she's part of Leadership San Juan this year. So thank you for your question. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I want to thank you very much, Mayor Chavez, for your time and all the information. And we'll continue to work with our county manager and CFO and go forward from here.
That's great. Mike has my contact information. Please use it and we'll look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, next on the agenda, we have Arvin Trujillo. If you'd like to come up and give your presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the San Juan County Commission. Good afternoon. I was, sorry, it was a little late, delayed. There was an accident on the highway coming in, so we were going through different detours all the way here to Albuquerque, to Aztec. So again, but I want to thank you very much for allowing me some time to go over what we've been doing with Four Corners Economic Development. I'm the CEO. I've been in this position since 2019. And again, through your support, we've been able to, to, to move forward in a number of different areas. And I want to give a summary as to what we've been doing. Next slide. Looking at the role and what we have going right now, again, the initiatives and the projects that we are involved in are really looking at how do we support local municipalities? What do we need to do in terms of projects, infrastructure, et cetera, in order to assist the municipalities and the county in looking at economic and community development? The other thing is, again, we, we really focus on partnerships, because those partnerships really help bring needed resources, equipment, manpower, et cetera. Because essentially, you're, you are looking at Four Corners Economic Development here. We are one-person operation. We're building a lot on our foundation. We're hoping to build on this aspect and, and move forward. Next slide, please. Again, everything that we do is based on strategic planning. We look at how we want to approach this. This strategic plan has been developed by the community. And again, it's something that, that we, we hold true to help us move forward in our efforts here in the county and with the municipalities. Next slide, please. Looking at what we've been doing, we identified five specific goals, looking at partnership relations, looking at organizational development, targeted industries, workforce capacity, and data analysis and marketing. Within each of these goal areas, we develop goal teams. Now, the, the, the aspects of having these teams is one, to, to gain community partnership, get community buy-in and insight from the whole community in these particular areas. And by that, we also develop buy-in for what we're trying to do and what we're trying to achieve within the whole community. And again, doing this begins to educate our public, because quite frankly, we are new at economic development here in this region. We've been blessed in the past. We have BHP, APS, E and M, Williams, Conoco, Halliburton, Exxon. We have all those big companies here, but all that's changed now. And so again, we're looking at economic development partnerships and BRE, how we look at, how, how do we develop those partnerships locally? Looking at organizational development, we're looking at transitioning from being basically centric, we're, we're an offshoot of Farmington Economic Development Services. But we've expanded from just Farmington, looking at the whole county, looking at target industries. What areas should we be targeting? What type of industry should we be looking for here in Four Corners? And then, once we have that, what workforce type development should we be focusing our efforts on? How do we begin to train our people here? And then marketing. And the vehicle we've used for that is, is website development. Next slide, please. So we talked about business retention and expansion. Next slide, please. With this, we, we went out to the University of Minnesota and we gained support and training from the, their extension service. With that, we went and looked at three specific areas, looking at research, prioritization, and implementation. We went out, we organized ourselves. From that, we went out and we obtained, or we did 100 interviews with businesses locally. We did the research. From that, we then took projects and prioritized them, developed them. And from the, from the initial piece, we had 87 possible projects. We honed that down to five. And that's what we're looking at in terms of prioritization. And we're looking at, we now have task force teams that are beginning to form in these five areas. And so we're looking at implementation. Again, it's to support local businesses, build a support base for future industrial recruitment, because as you build our local businesses, help them contain and sustain their retention, help them to expand. Again, this is your base from which you can then utilize them as services for new industry that you would bring into the area and begin to develop your workforce, your workforce, your skilled labor out in, in the field. Next slide, please. Member services. What have we built? What have we looked at up to this point? Next slide. Our, our bi-weekly newsletter. We've really worked hard and we've worked hard on developing links and making this viable and entertaining to the, to the community so that they know what's going on in the areas of economic development. We've incorporated news reporting, looking at census data, economic development data, putting that in a viable format so that people can understand that. I've gone out and I'm having one-on-one meetings with different leaders of the community. We started our quarterly economic development breakfast briefings, bringing more information and, and knowledge to the community. And with our website, we've incorporated property, commercial and leased property that we now have on our website, so site selectors can specifically see what we have in the county. We've also looked at how we can utilize our web, webpages, our sub-pages. That's one thing that I'm really proud of because of the involvement that we've had with the community. All our communities built their own sub-pages. All the schools and the colleges built their own sub-pages, all geared towards economic development. Because again, the idea is selling the county. Why should people move here? Why should people open their businesses here? Next slide, please. So talking about the newsletter, this is an example. We've been able to build this up. We had less than 100 people viewing our newsletter, but now we have over 1,100 subscribing to our newsletter now. We have a open rate of over 30%. Industry, industry averages around 25, 26%. So we're above that. And we continue to work on this piece. And if you want news about what's happening within Four Corners and Four Corners Economic Development, go to our website. That's our website location. Immediately, there's going to be a portal that pops up. You can put in your subscription for the, for the newsletter. It's bi-weekly. We have it coming out every, every two weeks. Next slide, please. Another example, as I indicated, we have property listings throughout the county. You can do searches. You can put specific types of property that you're looking for. It'll all come up across the county. That way, we, we have that information and we continue to build this aspect. And we're, we're seeing more hits onto our website because of this. People are beginning to see what is available to our area and what we're, we're looking at right now. One of the things that we're really working hard on is the San Juan industrial, the county's industrial park. We want to make that a centerpiece here on our commercial listing and really work hard to get that information out. And so again, we're working very hard to, to work on those aspects and bring notoriety into, into the county here. Next slide, please. Another thing we're working on is looking at training. Right now, we have the college, we have different organizations that are providing business training to our leader, to our business owners, business leaders, but sometimes they can't find those, those trainings or are not aware of them. We have a calendar now on our website where they can go and they get, they click on one of those, they get the full information on that training. If there's a fee involved, who's the instructor, where the class is going to meet, et cetera. Description about what the class will be teaching. All that information is provided on that, on that website page there. Next slide, please. Looking at collaboration and partnerships. And again, we see the importance of bringing partnerships here because San Juan County is not an island unto itself. If we're going to really achieve economic development, we have other jurisdictions we got to go through. We're surrounded by tribes, we're surrounded by states, we're surrounded by other counties. And so how do we effectively develop those partnerships? And how do we effectively market ourselves? Next slide. We've built our relationship with the New Mexico Economic Development Department. We continue to build bridges with them. We are now on their website. In the past, we were not. We're on their website. We have quarterly sessions with their representative, Lorraine Ruggles. And she's beginning, I take her on tours. I show her around the region. She's beginning to obtain a better understanding of what we have, not only in Farmington, but the whole county, looking at the different municipalities and looking at the unincorporated areas of the county to recognize what we do have. Next slide. We have what we call focus groups. This is under goal team number three. One of those focus groups deals with film. We initiated discussions with key stakeholders. We decided to bring a coalition of them together. We've been in discussions. There's the possibility of looking at developing a film office here. We're looking at ways that we can collaborate together now to bring the film industry here into the region. And again, we're looking at continuing this effort, looking at the next steps in 2022. Next slide, please. The next, another focus group deals with agriculture. We've got an alliance that's in place right now. Seven members in that alliance, all the farmers' markets here in San Juan County are under one alliance. We also coordinate with the local Harvest Food Hub to really provide resources to these farms as well as to these farmers' markets. And again, we're working with the college and the Harvest Hub to see how we can bring additional equipment into that Harvest Hub so we can open a commercial kitchen. We can get freezing units in there. We can do a number of things to help with entrepreneurship. We're developing a strong relationship with NAPI and we're also, we just recently finished a retreat with the producers and the buyers. That was on the 26th and 27th. Very well, we actually had about 23 farmers come online and join this meeting. And so, there is interest and we're working on how we can connect our producers with our buyers. How do we help with marketing? How do we look at developing the food hub? And how do we look at working with schools and restaurants to really provide produce for the local region and enhancing our farm-to-table initiatives? Next slide. With workforce development, we're looking at what we call desk-to-careers. One of the things we're focusing on right now is how do we bring high IT jobs into the region? Or how do we prepare ourselves for that? One of the main infrastructure goals that we're looking at is broadband development, bringing the internet here in the region. We're working hard and we think we're going to be successful with that. But once we're successful with that, who's going to run that? Who's going to maintain those systems? Who's going to help the tribes do those kind of things? The chapters, the town, the city. And so, again, we're looking at how we can develop these jobs and prepare our young people for opportunities coming into the future. And we're working hand-in-hand with San Juan College and the high school and the school districts to get this done. Next slide, please. Looking at the Navajo Nation's partnership. We initially started with five initiatives. We're focused on three. Looking at the pump storage electric, pump storage hydroelectric project in the western side of the county. We've got a supporting resolution out of Batabato. We're working with that to educate people on exactly what that is. It's a huge energy storage project that would bring new opportunities here in renewable development, in energy storage, and really open new avenues for us. We got the railroad. I got another slide looking at the railroad efforts there. Broadband, we're looking at how we can really bring comprehensive broadband development here in San Juan County. At first, we were looking at middle-mile development with Farmington Electric. Now, we have a full middle mile and full and last mile plan in place. We are now working with a company called Infocom, Arcadian Infocom, to bring what they call a backbone fiber optic system through this region here. They are looking at having a high-speed internet system that the main backbone connecting Phoenix with Salt Lake City. They want to branch off from Tuba City, come across the nation through San Juan County, up southwest Colorado and then follow 294, 254, all the way into Denver. Their goal is to get this high-speed hub in place so that they can connect Phoenix with Denver and Salt Lake City so they can look at the Googles, the Intels, those types of customers for that type of high-speed product. But we would benefit from this because if we have that backbone, high-speed development here going through the county, we can tap off that. Suddenly, we have the capabilities of using high-speed internet at much lower costs. And so, again, we're looking at that development. And we're looking at how we can partner effectively with the Navajo Nation to start that second phase coming this way. Yesterday, we recently, we had a meeting with the president. We had members of the commission and Mr. Stark in that meeting. And again, we were given direction on how to proceed with the pump storage and the railroad piece, the broadband efforts, Chaco Road and what's going to happen there. One thing I like to commend the chair on is she came out and asked for a quarterly meeting with the president and he agreed. So we will be working to set up quarterly meetings with President Nez to update one another on what's happening here with San Juan County. Next slide, please. Looking at community presentations. Next slide. As I talked about, we have what we call economic briefings now. Our first one was looking at coal-affected communities. We brought in the national coordinator of that, a Mr. Jack Morgan. We are now working and being in touch with other communities that are similar to us. The idea here is to begin to develop coalitions amongst ourselves so that we can learn from one another. What has worked for them? What hasn't worked for them as they begin to transition their economies away from fossil fuels? And so, we're working on that piece there. Next slide, please. We're going to have a second economic briefing and that's going to be focused on hydrogen. We're talking a lot about the hydrogen economy. We're talking about a hydrogen hub. Many of us don't know what that is, what that entails. What kind of resources will that take? Where is the market for this? What is hydrogen? How do you use it to burn and produce power? And so, again, all those types of basic questions is what we want to answer in this hub. We're having two meetings. The first on February 22nd, the second one on March 8th. And again, we're here to look at that hydrogen hub initiative. How do we look at this? And the better informed we become, the better we can prepare ourselves, working with the state of New Mexico on promoting this region as a potential hydrogen hub, which would then, if we are successful, that brings eight, some portion of $8 billion, maybe up to $2 billion, into the region to help with that type of development. And so, again, we're looking at that piece and this is an educational piece for everyone. Next slide. We're looking at community presentations. I said, we're looking at outreach, really beginning to go out to the community to let them know what we are doing. I've been doing many presentations on different subjects concerning economic development, focus on different issues with economic development, trying to educate the community on what economic development is. And so, that's been very worthwhile for me and it's really opened my eyes on what the public's perception is and areas that we need to work with as we move forward. Next slide. We talked about the rail and where are we at right now? Next slide. I can remember, Mike does too. We've been sitting in meetings. We talked about rail and people roll their eyes and say, "We've heard this." But again, we've really made great strides, working hand-in-hand with the county, working with the Navajo Nation. I've reported before, we were able to get a bill grant for $2 million. We have the MOU in place. We've reviewed the bids. Now, we have an engineering group ready to come onboard to start the planning piece. We were reassured by the president that the vice president will be that point of contact for the nation to help us get this piece in place. We have envisioned some timelines as to when we're going to get all of this all put together. And so, again, we're going to be moving forward to make this happen. And the thing that I like about this is that the U.S. Department of Transportation is very supportive and excited about us doing this greenfield development. So again, we're looking forward. Again, looking at marketing. We did a lot of the work to figure out how do we market San Juan County. When I first came on, it was always, we are one of the best-kept secrets in the nation. And so, the idea was how do we break away from that? How do we get out of that? So, we focused on not only looking at marketing but gaining data and looking at outreach. The best way we decided to do that was through our website. Next slide. So we went and we developed our website. We upgraded our website. And, next slide, please. Looking at our website, that's again, the address. We brought in contractors to assist us in the transitioning and the redevelopment. This new website went on-site April 1st. We were informed at the end of the year that we are one of the top 10 economic development websites in 2021. We've been really reporting a lot of tracking that's beginning to happen, not just regionally. We're getting a number of hits nationally. We're even getting hits across the world now. They're beginning to see what we're doing here in the Four Corners region, in San Juan County, and there is interest. And again, we're getting interest from other industries who are looking at our commercial sites and are starting to ask the questions, "What should we be doing?" And so, again, looking at this aspect, looking at our sub-pages that are in place. We've developed metrics. We can see where things are happening. One of the big things we're going to be focusing on with our website is training. How do we train our stakeholders, our policymakers, to be able to effectively use that website? There's a lot of information on there, demographic information, economic development information, property information, information about different aspects within the county. We're going to be working on target industries, et cetera. So how do we help individuals train on our website so they're prepared? So as questions come up, you can answer those questions. Next slide, please. We've tied the website to social media. We've grown our Facebook notoriety and really our face on Facebook has really improved and built itself. As I talked about, the newsletter, we've really worked hard on that. We've developed links to not only Facebook. We've got a YouTube channel now utilizing recordings. We're working hard on learning how to do that. We just now got indications from San Juan College. We also have interest from the high schools where we'll get these students working with us to develop videos to help us look at how do we begin to market things. And the thing I'm excited about is we can see it from the eyes of a young person. They can sell the community. And so, again, we'll be working on that. Next slide. So in closing, what do we see in '22 coming? We're going to continue with infrastructure development, the railroad, broadband development. We're going to continue working on energy projects, the pump storage, the hydrogen hub. We still have San Juan Generating Station. We still have Four Corners. We're going to continue that effort. We're going to look at communications and outreach. How do we continue to enhance our website? Looking at social media because that's how people communicate now. That was a learning experience for me. Even members of my board were looking at me saying, "I don't read the paper anymore. I don't look at magazines. I don't see advertisements," but they watch and they see things on social media. How do we use that more effectively? And really, work on our community outreach, our regional partnerships with the Navajos, with the other counties. We've got other tribes, the Southern Ute, the Ute Mountain Ute that we're beginning to open doors with. We're looking at that. Our business retention and expansion, how do we continue to help support our small businesses? How do we get training? How do we work with our owners? How do we work with agricultural growers and producers? We're looking at those pieces. And then, strategic planning implementation, really focusing on target industries. We want to be able to look at data. Next slide, please. And looking at that, we're looking at bringing on a couple more consultants. One is looking at the support of the creation of an asset map. We want to get a person in who can help us develop these asset maps, who can help teach us what it is and how do we use that more effectively? Because we want to be data-driven. We want to be able to look at data and I want to be able to share with the county and the municipalities, "Here's what the data shows. These are the industries you should be focused on. Here's where you should put your effort in." Instead of trying to throw mud against the wall and say, "Man, I hope this one sticks." We don't have the time nor do we have the money to do that. So how do we focus in on what we need to do? The other thing we're going to be doing is bringing in a consultant who will take data, do research and development, and really begin to help us figure out who should we look at in terms of retail and industrial development to bring in? And they have the role of these different companies. And so, as they begin to work with us, helping us teach, teach us and helping us gather this information, then with that information, being able to go out and pinpoint different companies, different businesses to go to them and say, "Come to San Juan County. Come to Farmington." We got started on this because Kirtland came to us and said, "We want a grocery store." We tried on our own to look at different ways to bring grocery, a grocery store to Kirtland, but the people we knew and we talked to, they weren't interested. But we went and did research. We found a company who said, "We've got connections to other grocery stores across the nation." They've been helping rural areas to bring different types of stores, hardware stores, auto stores, different food-type chains, et cetera. And he said, "It depends on what you have there and the assets you have and how do we sell your area." And so, we're going to bring that and they're willing to teach us how to do that. Next slide, please. So, Forset has had a productive year this year. We've been busy. We've built our capacity. We've been laying foundations. We've been developing our foundation and all of that despite COVID. We've been working hard to get this stuff done, but the work has got to continue. The investments have got to continue and that's what we'll be working hard because, again, I'm very proud of this community. I've been able to go out and ask for help, be on a goal team, be on a focus group, be on a BRE team, help us with the strategic plan. I've had people step up and say, "Yeah, I'll help you. We'll take part. We will participate." And so, this community has been very, very supportive on making that happen. So again, I just want to express my thanks to the county for your support, for your investment. And again, we're looking forward to 2022 and we think we can really make some things happen and really excited about what we have in store for us and the progress that we've seen. And I'm open for any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Arvin, for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions, Mr. Trivio? There's a lot of good information there, so it's really exciting.
Man, I'm getting better and better at this.
Exciting information. A lot of good things happening, so thank you for all your help yesterday.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we will have Nick Perrell, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Before you release this first item is the annual certification of our county-maintained road mileage for New Mexico Department of Transportation. Every year, we're required by state statute to certify our county-maintained road mileage to the DOT. This year, that includes 740.9 miles of county-maintained road. There's a slight increase this year as we did accept two new roads within a subdivision in Water Flow. So before you is your certification of that mileage, which is Resolution 21-22-48. Included with that, the middle will be digital data in GIS and PDF format that we'll also submit to the DOT. So I would request approval of that resolution and certainly answer any questions you might have.
And Madam Chair, Mr. Perrell presented item number five. This has been a mixed-up night anyway, so.
My bad.
I think that's okay.
I was going by resolution.
Just want to make sure you're all aware that was item five he's presenting.
248.
38, yes.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, I've moved to approve Resolution Number 2122-48.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Hey, here you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, here you go. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Perrell, if you'll go ahead and present on the next one.
All right. Madam Chair, Commissioners, for your Resolution 21-22-48... All right, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, for your Resolution 21-2249, which is a resolution of support of our application, uh, for participation into the 2022, 2023 New Mexico Department of Transportation Local Government Road Fund. Um, annually, we use these, these monies for pavement preservation projects, uh, rubberized crack seal and chip seal overlay. Um, it's for the purchase exclusively of materials. Uh, the, the work is done entirely by, um, county public work staff. Um, historically, um, the awards have been to the tune of about $400,000 annually. Uh, this year we're requesting $441,886. There is a required 25% match. That's included in that amount that I just said. Um, it would resurface approximately 15 miles of, of county road. Um, so I would certainly stand for any questions and request your approval of Resolution 212249.
With that, I have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion, 212249. We approve it?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What is that, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, opposed, then motion carries. Thank you, Nick. All right, Nixon's report from.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, just a couple items, uh, to present to you tonight and then, um, a bit of good news to share. Um, some good trends that Mr. Mestes and, and I'll, I'll bring you up here in just a second. Ms. Martin, some good financial trends that we want to share, so. But I'll start off first with the, uh, update on legislative, our legislature and how things are trending there. In front of you is our report, um, that we have assembled. We're tracking 139 bills. 490 bills have been introduced thus far. Um, tomorrow is the last day for bill introduction, so, uh, that piece has not ended quite yet. And then of course, the end of the session will be here soon. Um, February 17th, as Mayor Chavez mentioned in his presentation. So, uh, you can see the status on a lot of these bills. A lot of the, um, legislation thus far has, has maybe seen, um, one committee, uh, maybe at best two. And so there's a lot of work left, uh, for these pieces of legislation to get to the finish line. So I just wanted to point that out, but of course you can see the status on each of the bills that, that we've been tracking and, and wanted to make sure, um, you are aware of that. Can I answer any questions you might have about specific pieces of legislation? Uh, and I do also want to, um, mention to you, and I, I know Mayor Chavez mentioned it a couple times, making sure that, you know, we reach out to our legislators and I know, um, you all, um, some of you participated in our annual legislative, legislature luncheon, um, with our legislators and of course made them fully aware of capital project priorities, um, opportunities related, uh, to other programs that, that they could fund. Um, and then of course, other larger, uh, infrastructure projects that are on our infrastructure capital improvement plan that, that normally wouldn't fit in a, in a capital outlay process, but given the, the volume of, of funding that exists out there, um, you know, we're, we stand ready, um, and, and providing good shovel-ready projects, uh, to our legislators, um, should that funding become available. So I just wanted to make sure we reiterated that because I know that was mentioned a couple of times. And as, as you all know, we work very hard to maintain good communication and relationships with our legislators, so. Um, so any questions before I move on to the next item? On the legislative report? No? Okay, great. Uh, we, uh, as you, I mentioned to you, uh, a couple months back, probably three months ago, we, we, um, put out our every two-year employee satisfaction survey. So those results are summarized here in front of you, so I wanted to make sure you have those. Um, a similar response rate to our last, uh, effort in 2019, uh, where we had 211, um, surveys received this year compared to 212 in 2019. So that, that represents roughly a third of our employee base. Um, certainly wish that number was higher. We've, we've come up with different ways to try to increase, um, that, uh, that participation rate. Um, and, and just going to try to come up with ways in the future to do that. But, uh, that's, that's what, what we've received to date. So, uh, on a, on a general, um, you know, high level overview and you look at, at the questions we asked, uh, results have stayed roughly the same from 2019. You know, uh, sometimes you get some movement in categories from completely satisfied to somewhat dissatisfied. Um, likewise, on the other end of the scale, if somebody was frustrated or dissatisfied with something, you see some movement between those two categories. But, but generally speaking, things have stayed, um, roughly the same, which in some ways is good and other ways it's not. Um, as you look at the various questions. But I do want to point your attention to page three, question four. Uh, what should San Juan County do to make it a better place to work? And what was a consistent result from 2019 to 2021? Um, even though we did have the opportunity with some pay increases this year, uh, pay is still the number one concern, uh, from our employees. And so, um, as we head into the budget cycle, obviously this survey will be utilized not only for just general opportunities for improvement here in the county in ways to improve employee relations, morale, the environment, but also, uh, from a budgeting perspective, there may be some, some things that are necessary for us to bring to you relative to that. And of course, this is a very dynamic labor market that we're in right now and it's very competitive. And, uh, lots of staffing shortages across lots of different industries. Um, so I, I, by no means am saying this is unique to, to local government, but, uh, definitely we're, 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 we're suffering and, and having some challenges. And you all are aware of staffing challenges at the Adult Detention Center. And that is, um, one of our highest priorities, um, certainly for my, um, administration here to make sure we can get our Adult Detention Center fully staffed. And Sheriff's Office has certainly shared with their, um, struggles relative to, to being fully staffed. But, uh, those are going to be, um, important topics as we head into the, to the upcoming budget cycle. So I want to make sure you have this survey and certainly, um, you know, you've just received it tonight and we can, um, review that at a later date. Or if you had questions, I'm happy to, to answer those as well. But, but this is an important tool for us to gauge, um, employee satisfaction here within the county. And, and you can be just assured that, that, um, my office as well as, uh, all of our, um, executive leadership team, which includes department heads, deputies, elected officials, uh, their deputies. Uh, we, we visited pretty extensively today during our staff meeting about these results. So, um, you'll see some, some action plans coming, um, as a result of those, uh, further discussions. So I can stand for any questions you might have before we turn it over to Mr. Mestes and Ms. Martin. Who wants to go first?
Mr. Sir?
Yes.
Um, do you think that some of the, the shifts are coming, you know, there's, I, I read through it and some of the shifts, uh, with the dissatisfaction, do you think that that's coming from our detention center folks? I know that it also says that you took the department area designation out of it to make it more anonymous.
Correct.
Um, I'm just, I, I, part of me wishes that was still in there so that we could gauge, you know, if it's the sheriff's department or the detention center, that where some of those trends are, are going.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Beckstead, you're spot on. We actually had a pretty robust discussion about the survey as we were developing it for this year. And, and we thought that, well, maybe, um, employees would be, um, less likely to respond if they had to put what department they work in, especially for smaller departments. Uh, we've heard comments in the past that, oh, you would be able to identify who made that comment, which is absolutely not what we're looking to do. We actually want to solicit candid feedback. So this year, in an attempt to boost, um, survey responses, we pulled that question out, but we did talk about that today during our staff meeting because that's absolutely, um, somewhat detrimental in terms of being able to say, okay, uh, here are the various departmental results. Is that you can see specifically, is it a true county-wide problem or is it specific to one department or elected office? I can tell you that a lot of the, um, concerns related to staffing and overtime, even some of the pay, uh, concerns, uh, are coming from the Adult Detention Center and rightfully so. Um, because we've seen, we've been hit the hardest when it comes to, um, staffing, uh, concerns there. And so, um, just here last week, myself and Mr. Cox, um, along with Mr. Webb and Ms. Cook, um, as you know, we're doing state of the county addresses to our employees, uh, giving employees information regarding where the county stands financially. And then more importantly, asking for input on, on ways that we can improve operations, improve, uh, conditions, uh, for employees. And we received a lot of good feedback, uh, from our detention officers, um, specifically related to, to, to our, uh, visit up there. And, and really, at the end of the day, to solve those problems, we need to be fully staffed. And so we're, we're doing the market, um, survey, uh, compensation survey again. Uh, I have no doubt that it's probably going to show, even though we had increases last year for detention and sheriff's, uh, office. I, I would bet you that those are going to see that we're still out of market and certainly relative to inflation running 6% to 7%. So, um, it, uh, just want you to all be aware of, of this, this kind of dynamic situation we're in and, and trying to gather as much feedback as we can from employees and then turn it into, to an actionable plan, uh, for you all to consider as we're moving through, through budget. But I appreciate the, the comment because that is, that's absolutely true. We did remove that question. I, I think for the next time around, we ought to put it back in because it didn't change the response rates.
And I, I think on page 12, on the question 12, it says, do you feel comfortable making suggestions to your supervisor? It looks like there was a good response on it. So that's positive.
Yes, 74% higher than last time said yes, they do feel comfortable.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering, uh, Mike, uh, what about the, uh, 7500 down there, Chaco Canyon Road?
Uh, Madam Chair and, and Commissioner Sullivan, great timing on your question. We, we actually visited, uh, yesterday with President Nez regarding, um, that road and, and, um, trying to find ways to improve the conditions both on the county side of the fence as well as on the last four miles that runs on the Navajo Nation. And, and, uh, we extended our, our hand of cooperation and willingness to work together on that project. And, and Mr., uh, or Mr. President Nez agreed to, to do so. And so, um, it was a very productive, productive meeting overall, but specifically to that, uh, project was very productive. So, uh, more to come and, and, uh, once we have a, a formal solution and we require ultimately, uh, probably some type of a budget, uh, request related to that, we will certainly bring that to you, Commissioner Sullivan.
What about the, uh, what about the Vigo Bridge? Anything on that yet?
Um, Madam Chair and Commissioner Sullivan, uh, actually, and Mr. Perrell is, is in the audience and could update you if he, if I, if I don't capture this fully, but, uh, he's just prepared a scope of work. Uh, as you might recall, we received a $150,000 grant last legislative session to have an alternatives study, uh, done. And so we'll hopefully, within the next, uh, 45 days or so, we'll have an engineering firm on board to evaluate that. And, and of course, we, uh, Mr. Perrell and his team are, are always closely monitoring conditions at, at Five Mile Bridge. Um, you know, this time of year, obviously we're not too concerned because you're just not going to get the, the volume of moisture that could, could cause us a problem. But, uh, as we head into the monsoon season, we'll certainly be paying close attention because our, our desire and, and goal, as you know, is to maintain that bridge, um, and keep it open as long as we can, especially while we're, we're having this analysis done.
Well, I want to thank Nick for all the work that he's done out there so far, so looks good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stark.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, coming before you today to give you a quick financial update. Um, last week I sent out the, um, GRT and oil gas reporting. And as you can see, our, our revenues are coming in higher than what we had originally budgeted, which is a, is a positive aspect. Um, when you look across all the industries, um, you can see that all the industries are seeing an uptick. Um, but retail trade has seen the largest uptick overall. Um, and we, we believe that one of the, um, contributing factors to that is internet sales. So that's, that's becoming, you know, positive in our fact, in our favor. Um, whenever we look at the expenditures overall, um, the county has spent about 41% of our budget. Um, and we're 58% with, into the year. So we're, we're under budget with our spending, which is also a positive aspect. Um, another thing that will be coming through is I believe the tribe is, tribe is going to be sending out their hardship checks. So chances are, you know, um, those individuals will be coming into Farmington or into the surrounding areas and spending that money. So that hopefully that will continue to, to, uh, contribute to our rise in GRT. So, um, and with that, I stand for any.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mestes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission. Staff is absolutely continuing to keep you abreast of the COVID situation in San Juan County. Uh, good news, it, COVID trend is going downward. Uh, Omicron is, uh, supposedly has peaked, uh, according to our conference call we've had with the hospital. So that's good news as well. Uh, today's census was 147 and it had been as high as 180. Uh, 46 COVID positives in the hospital. Again, that had been as high as 70. And, uh, the great news is one innovation today, one ventilated, uh, COVID patient and that had been up to, in the 20s. So very great numbers. Some items that are going on in, uh, San Juan County that during the month, uh, that have been directed to me by the Department of Health is the vaccine bus, uh, is coming up, uh, the 15th through the 20th. Uh, Department of Health, uh, even though we have great vaccination here in San Juan County, they want the vaccine bus to be seen in the community. So I've got San Juan College, the hospital, Farmington West, the Walmart, uh, McGee Park, those locations. I'm coordinating, uh, as we speak with those areas to get the vaccine bus for six, seven hours a day in those locations. So folks can come and get booster shots and things like that. So, uh, if they're not going to the Walgreens or pharmacies, they can go to the, to the vaccine bus, uh, and that'll be readily available. Uh, the other thing that has been, uh, taken up a lot of my time is COVID test kits. The Department of Health sent me 33,000, uh, last month.
That's huge.
And, uh, so a big undertaking. Uh, and then today I just received, uh, about, uh, 44,000. Three more pallets, uh, was delivered today and, uh, I'm going to get those out.
Where did that go?
Initially, the 87420, which was Shiprock area, uh, those were the initial onset of, of kits that were sent out there. Uh, I worked with IHS and the chapter houses were, where they sent those. And they were getting those out to the outlined members of the community. Uh, and they were using, uh, YouTube, uh, translation in the native language to teach members how to, how to use those. Uh, in turn, 87417, the Kirtland community, the Oaxam Rio Fruitland area, those were, uh, a big site that they wanted to, uh, get those out to as well. Farmington West, the 7401 zip code, because they were all distributed through zip, zip codes. Uh, we hit all the nonprofits, we hit, uh, shelters, uh, and those areas. And then lastly, uh, the city of Bloomfield, uh, so the fire stations, the, the police station, the senior centers, the Blanco Senior Center, those areas, uh, were hit as well. So, uh, there's a new portal now on the Department of Health that you can request test kits. So that'll be a new undertaking as well as we move forward. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. So did they send them to your home or tell you when to come pick up the test?
Uh, the portal, uh, is an emergency manager allocation, so I'll have to make arrangements for pickup or distribute, distributing them. Uh, but, uh, as you, uh, as you said, Madam Chair, uh, the, the government did have a, a mail order so that you could request a mail-in test kit as well.
Okay.
So that process is in place as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, um, children under five, uh, aren't really getting sick. I mean, not, I, I haven't read on that. Uh, how about the vaccine for those, you know, the smaller kids?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Tochini, uh, great question. Uh, we have not seen a high rise in infected, uh, children, uh, under five, but, uh, great timing with your question because today the, the FDA, uh, approved Pfizer for, uh, children under five. I read that as, as I was coming to them.
Where, where did you find that? On their website or?
Uh, I get the Homeland Security emails and so that came out on one of the COVID emails that, that I saw. And, and I'll double check, uh, my recollection, but I'll send that to, to Mr. Stark to send to the commission.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Any other? Nick?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, real quick, a bit of positive news and a and a request for you all. You may have, well, you may recall that last fall, we had applied for a grant for from the New Mexico ONRT Office of Natural Resources trustee for some Gold King Mine Settlement Funds for our boat ramp project in Cedar Hill. They did release a draft plan just yesterday, which I know Mr. Stark shared with you. We were fortunate to be included in that draft plan to the tune of $160,000. That plan is now open for public comment. So as you interact with folks in the community and they might ask you what's going on in the county, if you might remind them of that and let them know that we could use some positive feedback. And there's a a website that is in that email Mr. Stark shared that they could provide positive comment for that project because we want to make sure we get that funding.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stark, you might reach out to Mr. O'Brien. I know that he has a little network of kayakers and and people that utilize those things. So that might be somebody to reach out to.
I'll do so.
I wonder about with Michelle, what she does with the drought and those water users.
Sure. You bet. You bet. And then River Reach Foundation, I think would be another group for, for Madam Chair.
Okay. Are there any other reports? Anything from our elected officials like to comment or say? Hearing nothing. Comments input from the general public is limited to the subjects that commission is not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Comments can be made in person or remotely via WebEx and are limited to three minutes during the meeting. Comments can be mailed or delivered to our address here at the county. Comments must be received in a reasonable amount of time before the meeting. Comments submitted via hand delivery, mail, fax or email as listed will be distributed to the commissioners and read into the record during public comment. Attending online has occurred and the public may watch live stream on YouTube or listen through telephone number provided below. Mr. Neely, do we have anything? No comments? Any emails that we've received?
None this week.
Okay. Then with with that, I stand that
If you want to make it available, is there any open person?
Oh, okay. Are there any other comments at this time? We'll take public comment. Then we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.